Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the Monday, September 24 regular meeting at the City of Prospect Heights in the Council Chambers at 8 North Albert Road. If we could take a roll call for the quorum possibly?
Yes, Mayor. Alderman Williamson?
Here.
Alderman Messer?
Here.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Ludvikson?
Here.
We have five Aldermen. We have five at the meeting tonight, so we have a full quorum. Thank you for coming. The Pledge of Allegiance led by an audience member, and we would like to ask Rodney Adams to do the same. Having all your experience at the Rotary Club, I know you know how to do it.
(inaudible)
Pastor Rod Kruger is here today for our Redeemer Lutheran Church, and if you would kindly give us a little pep talk called the invocation.
Mayor Helmer and members of the City Council, thank you for the invitation this evening. And as you wish, if you would, join me in a word of prayer. Thank you. Lord God, heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for this day that you've given to us. And, Lord, we thank you as well for those before us this evening who have taken up positions of leadership and authority in our community of Prospect Heights. Lord, and I especially ask that you would bless and keep them this day. May they certainly act with wisdom in the decisions and choices that they make, and, Lord, may their actions as well be done certainly with integrity, and may they allow us as residents to live peaceful and quiet lives. Lord, all this we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. The council appreciates it, so thank you. We want to do a couple things. The approval of minutes, September 12 to 2018, special workshop meeting minutes. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any changes additions? There being none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvikson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We have appointments and confirmations and proclamations is the name of the topic, but we have appointments for the Prospect Heights City Redevelopment Committee. Any appointments are as follows. James Kiefer. Jerry Meyer. Timothy De La Riva. Philip Carbonara. All of them should be familiar to you. I'd like to just have a motion to... Oh, Charles Curry is not here, but he would like to be appointed also. So you have letters in your file asking to be appointed by these people. I believe there's a total of six. We're looking for the seventh, and we do have someone that couldn't make it. So, given that, are there any... Does anyone desire to interview any one of these people? Aldermen, please, anyone? All right, so the appointments stand. We need a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
And we need a roll call.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvikson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We also have Terry Anderson here. She's been on the North Shore Committee. Terry, we were too late to get you on the agenda, but as long as you're here, maybe we can move this forward, so if it pleases the council. So if you want to tell us, I believe you've been on the board there for six years. I believe we missed your reappointment, and I do have a letter that I just passed out now for your reappointment to that group. You served with John Styler, if I remember correctly, and Holly Algauer, and all three of you have done a great job on behalf of the City of Prospect Heights. You've been a citizen here in Prospect Heights?
Almost four years.
Four years?
Twenty.
Twenty-four. Twenty.
Twenty years.
Okay, thank you. And also, your home is in Fairway Estates. That's correct, right? So, given all that, what I'd like to do is ask anyone if they want to wait for Terry to be put on the agenda at the next meeting, or if you're willing to interview her right now, or at least call for a motion to pass her and put her on the committee. We were remiss in this. We missed your reappointment. So, here we go. And Alderman Rosenthal?
Mr. Mayor, I wish to make a motion to reappoint Terry Anderson to the CBB as our representative to the CBB.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anyone else? Let's do a roll call on this issue.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvikson?
Aye.
Alderman Messer?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-5-0. We'll get together also with our administrator in the next few days, but I know you know a lot. You've been there a long time, and I'm personally sorry that we missed your reappointment. We just...
I've been extremely active with the organization. I come from a hotel background years ago and know the importance that connection Gerald brings to the city. I was instrumental in having Prospect Heights appointed to this association, and I'm extremely pleased that Prospect Heights was involved.
Well, thank you for your service, and I know you're going to do great things in the future also. So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Joe, moving on.
Brings us to public comment. Do we have any items that agenda matters?
We do not.
Staff elected officials and commission reports. First meeting in the month, we do have a report from the airport, and Jim Kiefer is here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and city staff, once again, thanks for having us. As your representative on the airport board, our goal is to give you all the information that we can give you and to follow up on any questions you have. Our monthly meeting was postponed last week due to lack of quorum. Nila said it was in Mexico. It was a religious holiday, and for some other reasons, we didn't have the quorum. So I'm back. The religious holidays are over, and we're ready to go next week, or this Wednesday will be our scheduled meeting. Things are looking great at the airport, and that's always nice to say. We're thin budget. Fuel sales are up, and that kind of gets redundant, but everything's hitting on all pistons. Our Economic Development Director, George Sackus, is doing a fine job for us. We're moving on certain purchases, which, at this point, I'm not able to elaborate until they're final. The CMT is providing... They're engaged in the master plan, Phase Three. We have established our SIG Stakeholders' Interest Group. We've set up some meetings for them, and then we will go out for an open public comment. And that date is... The public meeting is 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 4. Besides that, Customs, building a new customs facility is going well. We finally were able to knock down some of the square footage that they first required, the Border Patrol. So we're trying to keep it low-key, low-budget, and operational, and so hopefully we'll have a decision on that coming up. Everything else, if anybody's read in today's paper, the state has approved 3.6 million for noise abatement mitigation and for widening the second runway, our second-largest runway, and for some lighting. That figure is a round number until we see the definite cost. I don't want to say too much, but it was a substantial amount over the other local area airports, so we're very pleased with that. Noise mitigation's always been a top concern of both governments, Wheeling and Prospect Heights, and we hope to get that ball... That is it for my report. Is there any questions, concerns, comments?
Alderman Williamson? No, thanks, Jim. Alderman Messer?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Moving on to Alderman Rosenthal.
That's very good news about the grant for the noise abatement budget.
Alderman Dolick?
No questions. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Ludvikson?
Just one question. Is there a new Wheeling representative?
No, there is not. There is not. I'm not sure of any names. I try to focus on Prospect Heights. There's enough politics here that we don't know who's on the list, and we don't know when it's going to be decided.
Okay.
So...
Good answer.
Yeah. It's safe for that one.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right, we're moving on, Joe.
Yes, sir. Which brings us to the August Treasurer's Report from Finance Director Ducharme.
Just a few things to bring to your attention. In your packet is the August 2018 Monthly Financial or Treasurer's Report. I don't think there are any surprises in there. Things seem to be moving along as expected, but if ever you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or send me an email. Next on my list is the SSA Number Six refunding bonds are scheduled to close this coming Thursday. There's approximately $200,000-some thousand dollars of savings for the residents or property owners in Special Service Area Number Six. The timing couldn't have worked out better to sell those bonds. The earliest we were able to sell them was September 15. Today is, what, the 24th? We were able to get them sold, and I think we maximized the savings on the related to those bonds. Azavar was out here to start their audit process last Monday. They spent from 8:30 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon copying documents related to franchises, leases, revenue payments that we've been receiving from every revenue source within the City of Prospect Heights. They're building their library, which is what they need to do to start looking into any missing taxes that they could possibly find for the city. So I'm pleased to see that getting started. Lastly, or last on my list, in your packet or as part of Joe's report was a fund balance policy. I guess the question came up last Wednesday at the meeting. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have related to the newly drafted fund balance policy that's out there, and we'll be looking to move that forward or get it approved at an upcoming council meeting. Are there any questions?
Anyone? All right, good report. Thank you.
Very good question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I would just like to compliment you and your staff about giving us an August report in the middle of September, not six months later. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, Joe, let's move back to Item 9, Staff Elected Officials and Commission Reports. We'll just go right down the line, no particular order, but we can start with Chief Stefan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everyone know that we're looking for two police officer candidates, and we have a test coming up on October 27. And I'd also like to recognize and thank Pastor Rod for all his efforts in helping put together an excellent drive. They distributed food baskets and gift cards to a lot of the victims from the fire and did so last Thursday night. Thank you, Pastor Rod.
Thank you. Alderman Ludvikson?
No report at this time.
Alderman Dolick?
No report. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Just that the robbery residents are looking... At least some of them are looking forward to the beginning of street repairs. That begins tomorrow. No other report.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Messer?
I don't have a report, but I was just wondering if this little informational flyer we received is what we plan on sending out on Home Rule? If it's going to go out shortly, or if we're still on target? I believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at the last meeting you had suggested we get something out before the newsletter, because the quarterly newsletter would be too close to the voting date. Are we still on target to get something out beforehand?
Well, we're still... You know, if we can get the newsletter out, it still would be in that also. But, Joe, I think the start of this and then meetings, two meetings planned, what do you have there?
We do. Well, first of all, we do have a special communications about Home Rule that will be going out soon. I would say, Peter, maybe in the next two weeks?
Correct. Right now, it's in the review phase. We want to make sure that anything we send out is within the parameters that legal has set forth on what the city can and can't do with Home Rule. Treasurer Tibbetts put together a great list of frequently asked questions. Once that is completed, it will go to our vendor for printing. We should be able to get that out within a two-week period, so...
And we also have two meetings coming up, a town hall meeting format, informative, educational effort, and it's also an opportunity for council members to come out. While we can't advocate, we certainly can explain to citizens why we put this on the ballot and some of the reasons for it. And one is scheduled will be at the Morava Center, I believe that's October 30, and the other one will be at City Hall, and it's the week before. I can't remember the date on that one, but...
24.
24, okay. 24th and the 30th, here and at the Morava Center.
Okay. Just want to make sure we were on target to get something out.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk, Deputy Adams Morgan.
Just wanted to remind everyone that the Wheeling Prospect Heights Chamber is putting on the Taste of Town on Thursday, September 27, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Chevy Chase Country Club, 1,000 North Milwaukee Avenue in Wheeling. It's a great event. It's... We're going to have more than 30 restaurants participating. It's great food, great drink, great fun. It's really a wonderful time for everyone. Tickets are only $35 apiece, and, you know, to remind everybody that the Wheeling Prospect Heights Chamber does a lot to promote the businesses in our town and assist the businesses in our town. So I think it's a well worthwhile event to attend, and again, it's going to be a lot of fun and great food.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk Karen Schultes?
Well, thanks, Mayor. If you'd like a preview of coming events, we're going... November 24th has just been given as the date for the tree lighting ceremony at Gary Morava Center at 5:00 p.m. There'll be a lot more information on that coming up.
What is that?
The tree lighting ceremony.
Tree lighting? Oh, my gosh. Postcard...
It's not even Halloween yet, but...
Wow. David Peterson, our director?
Just like to report, last week, I attended the Community Consolidated School District 21 School Board Meeting. It was at the invitation of Superintendent Conling, and I was there to receive on behalf of the city a thank you letter from the district for our assistance in working with and helping those families of students in District 21. Copy of that letter went out in my report last week, but the school board was very appreciative of the support that we gave them, and also I reiterated and passed along our thanks to them for all their assistance with helping all of our residents of the fire at the River Trails condo complex. So that'll be it.
All right. Thank you. For Mr. Peter Falcone?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And Mr. Asko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, as Alderman Rosenthal stated, the street resurfacing begins this week. I've spoken to quite a few residents, some concerned, some just curious, wondering what's going on and what the timeline is. We're looking forward to getting it done before the snow flies, and nice streets to plow this winter. Fall color plantings and decorations have begun around town. You'll see the islands on Milwaukee Avenue and River Road, and the berms have already started getting some planting, and we are just... We're excited to have some nice, cool weather to get some work done, and the crew is just moving along. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. First, I'd like to ask a question. The end of last week, there was a robo-call that went out about the Connor McShane deal versus, you know, that the council accepted, and I was curious if there's any information on that call, where it came from, what it was about.
Anyone want to respond? I know I got four calls. When I answered the first one, it was the last one I answered or listened to.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
I said I... At home, on my home phone, which I hardly ever use, I believe there were four calls, and one of them, first one I reviewed or listened to, and then I didn't answer any other ones. So I didn't think it was much of an issue.
Okay.
The issue's over.
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, the information that was put out on that call was full of a lot of false information. It had mentioned that there was a, you know, 100,000-square-foot warehouse that was being put up that was going to have 2,000 or 20... I think it was 2,000 trucks a week or a day. Point being, that property has been sold, but we have no idea what's truly going to be built on it. Right now, it's just a conceptual 100,000-square-foot building. In addition to that, the cost of the project, you know, upfront costs, yes, the Connor McShane deal was 2.75... Actually, it was $2.73 million versus the trucking company that was offering, long-term, over a course of 10 years, 3.75. But as we crunch the numbers, the benefit to the community over the course of 20 years, the deal we took was in the better to the tune of about $2 million. So I believe that I, along with the council, made a very wise decision in voting for the Connor McShane deal, and hope that that clears up any of those untruths about the robo-call that went out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. City Administrator?
No reports, sir.
That, I believe, leaves me...
Oh, there he is.
Came out of the... Came out from behind the curtain, sorry.
I didn't want you to forget me.
No, I don't want to forget.
Okay. Just a couple other points about the Home Rule Educational Campaign of the cities. I've been working with Joe periodically, and we've discussed a lot of things, and we've got some things in motion now, working on the flyer and, of course, the forums or... We ought to call them that, forums, on 24th and the 30th. I've been also working on a PowerPoint that we can use to run on the cable channel and also at the forums. Joe is going to be the host, I guess you would say, of the forums, and he's going to introduce it and field any questions and comments that people would like to make. The AV department will be providing a sound system at the Park District for that event. And basically, I'm just trying to pull together all of the pieces of information and then also ancillary information that we could post on the city website in a specific spot that people could access to learn more about Home Rule if they feel like they want to really get into the details of it all. So that's basically it, and I think things are moving at the right speed at this point in time and hopefully going in the right direction. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Lastly, I think it's important that we note that we went over to the third-grade school over there. Which one was it?
The fourth grade at Ann Sullivan.
Ann Sullivan, yes. There's three schools over there. And I had a little talk, and it's amazing what third and fourth graders, the questions they come up with. One of the questions, for example, was, since we had the chief, I had a chief there, I had Dana from the commission regarding the slew questions, and also two other officers, and of course Karen was there to back me up just in case. But one of the questions was, are those policemen your bodyguards? I said, no, those two are the bodyguards for the chief. Because he needs it. So, it's very interesting. If you ever get a chance, you should go out and do things like that, because it brings you down a level, and, you know, someone asked me what color I like, and they asked me that, and I hadn't even thought about it, but I answered a question.
And every time we go to any classroom, they always ask if you work with President Trump.
Yes. That was the second question, right? Do I... Yeah, exactly. Do you work with President Trump? Yeah. I said, Joseph Trump is a friend of mine, but I don't know Donald Trump. So, it's fun, and you should, you know, if you get a chance, do things like that. That's all I have. Can we move on?
Thank you, sir. This brings us to Item 12, New Business. Item A is a resolution and staff memo approving Phase One Preliminary Engineering for Wolf Road Sidewalk, Old Willow Road to Palatine Road with Gwalt Hamilton Associates for a fee not to exceed $76,388. And this is the project that we had previously submitted to Cook County, the Invest in Cook Program from the Cook County Department of Transportation, and we received a grant for that, and there are subsequent amendments. Basically, the county has advised us that they would fund the Phase One engineering, which would be needed our next opportunity for an application for this stretch of sidewalk with the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program is October of 2019. And with this engineering study, I think this would put us in good shape. We scored very highly the last time, and I'm hopeful that having this completed would certainly reaffirm our commitment to the project, and it may take us several years, but I'm hopeful that someday we have a Wolf Road sidewalk from the metro station to Palatine Road.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second, please.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And a comment, please. Joe, I know you and I have discussed this somewhat in the past, but I wanted to bring this up at the meeting. I know it'll be done in phases, but what is the total cost of this program from start to finish? I know it might be done from Old Willow south and then going further north, but what is the total cost and would... How much or what percentage would these possible grants cover?
Going from Old Willow to the Palatine frontage, I think the estimate is between $800,000 and $900,000. With an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant, we would be responsible for about 20% of that. However, I believe with this, there'd also be a reduction for this phase, too. So that... And not to get into too much detail, the reason why this stretch of sidewalk is so expensive is we're not dealing with flat ground. We'd also have to make the drainage improvement to the swales, which is problematic, because people that walk along Wolf Road, they really can't walk into the easement because there's a ditch there. So that's a problem. The other stretch, which we've applied for, a regional transportation authority access to transit grant, and that we applied this year. We should be learning about that within the next six months, how we fare. We should be learning about that within the next six months, how we fared. That, I believe, is also about $800,000. But that one, my recollection is the, the city's co-payment is 10% of that. And again, that also involves some drainage improvements as well. So that's why this stretch, sidewalks can be expensive to begin with, but it's exacerbated when you're also trying to fill in swales.
Thank you. And just a quick comment, I know I've mentioned this to you. Living on the east side, I travel that road frequently, usually multiple times a day. I see many pedestrians and bicyclists use that road, whether they're going to the train station or after college, various locations. And in my opinion, I think it's, it becomes a real safety issue, and I would love to see something like this go through. The berm is unimproved, it's dirt and gravel. Various times of year, there are gullies and potholes in that. The speed limit there, I believe, is 45 miles an hour, which means you're going in excess of that. With the number of people that use this, just from a safety standpoint and convenience, I would love to see this proceed forward. I think that would be a great improvement, and it would be utilized by a great many people. That's all I have, thank you.
I couldn't agree with you more. I drive that very frequently, that road.
Joe, was there any discussion about if they have a widened Wolf Road? Is this sidewalk taking consideration of that? That's the only stretch of Wolf Road that's two lanes or three lanes in some spots.
Right.
If they widen it, are they putting this sidewalk? They already have the easements or the right-of-way for probably already for widening it. Is it being put in so that it won't get tore up again? I know the county would pay for it if it did, because it would be their road.
Our, our very preliminary studies of this, and you're right, there has been discussion previously, for example, if this city and probably would be a partnership, because wheeling's on the other side, but for example, to obtain a congestion mitigation air quality grant at the, at a minimum to have a center turning lane. So you wouldn't have backups with that. But it's our initial understanding that the right-of-way is wide enough that if we plan the sidewalk, and as you notice, there's also a gravel shoulder there. So the sidewalk would go further into that, more of actually where the swales are. So, and granted, we don't have any drawings of a plan for, for a third lane, but I'm just kind of sensing, with Steve Brez and I, we took a look at it. It would be further in, so if they did go to a third lane Wolf Road, it's not like a carriage walk, it's deeper into the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that issue? If not, we need a motion to approve AR-18-33, which is the Phase 1 preliminary engineering, or what else do we need?
We're going to motion. You need a motion?
We already have a motion.
No, we're good, we're good. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, Joe.
Next item follows, last meeting's discussion of two drainage studies. The first item, Item B is a resolution and staff memo approving Arlington Countryside Area Conceptual Engineering Drainage Study with Gualt Hamilton, fee not to exceed $24,500. The delivery date is February 2019, so that would also be at the time when we're discussing the budget and how we might progress forward after this study is completed. And it, it basically puts the direction of last meeting's council in contractual form to move forward with this study.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussions? There being none, I'll take your roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
That's for the approval of R-18-34. Next one?
Similarly, similarly, Item C is a resolution approving the East Side Tiff District Conceptual Engineering Drainage Study with Gualt Hamilton Associates for a fee not to exceed $39,500. And this also follows from the last council meeting in recognition that there's a need for stormwater improvements in that neighborhood. And this, this would get that work going. This, this work is anticipated to be completed March 2019, so it would also coincide with next year's budget discussions.
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out, nothing about the project specific, but just point out how big a moment this is to be approving these two resolutions for the engineering to be done, because in 16 years being involved with the city, every year we talked about doing something like this and moving forward with it, but realized we didn't have the money to do it. We initially got the, I forget, the Christopher Burke Study, which was like this, if we won the lottery, what we would do with drainage. And now we've actually got to the point where we said, we see in the future that because of setting up the capital improvement programs and really making a conscious effort to set aside money, that we have enough money and will have enough money to really do these projects over the next few years. So this is, this is as big a thing that's happened in my 16 years here, tonight. It seems small, two little resolutions, but it's a big deal.
And if I may stress, going into last year's capital budget, this was not an item because we did not have money. This is coming from last week's discussion about the sale proceeds.
We have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion for Item R-18-35. Roll call, please.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item D is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County to provide for Wolf Road sidewalk Phase 1 engineering. This is, as we discussed, this is, county would contribute $75,000 for the Phase 1 engineering study.
Motion to approve?
Some move.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. What is, what is the, they're looking for $75,000 from us?
No, sir, that's what they would contribute.
Okay, and what's, what's our cost?
For this, our cost is about $2,000, or $1,388.
Wow. That's the lowest number I've heard for county work.
But it's solely for engineering, as we get further into construction, but we'll apply for other grants.
It's solely good. Any other questions, comments? If not, approval for R-18-36. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We're on to upcoming workshop meeting items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one question before we leave the new business. When, I trust it's to Administrator Wade, when can we expect to see the resolutions? I understand why they were removed, because of timing.
Yes, sir.
When can we expect to see them on the agenda next meeting?
At the October 5th meeting, correct.
All right. So Joe, we have on item 13, first issue is Home Rule discussion. Are we still working on that?
These are the topics, yes, sir, these are the topics that have been identified.
Mm-hmm.
And we are also, we will coordinate with the Police Pension Fund for a presentation about that, that had been discussed previously. And then Home Rule is ongoing, really until the referendum. And the other item that, which had been identified was, is a carryover item, is Organization and Operation of City Council.
Comments, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, last meeting, we talked about the Tourism District grant approvals or grant, applications and payments. And I believe we had asked to have somebody come here, I believe it was Alderman Rosenthal asked for the chairman, or whoever could come here and talk about the process they used, the standards they used for determining how they're going to spend their grant money. You know, this is a big item on this, on this warrant that I would ask that we pull off and table till we get that information, because those applications are very, very much lacking in detail as to how they benefit the city. So I would ask that we put that on the agenda so that we could move forward with making those payments once we're assured that, that those applications are correct.
Mike, anyone else? Yes, sir.
If, if we need a motion for that, and if you're making a motion, to remove that, I'll second.
Well, I'd make it to put this as an item on 13 for the workshop.
Well, what about the 70?
That's the next item.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were talking about that. Okay.
I just want to pull it off, and we do have that in discussion.
I do remember that at the last meeting, we asked Michael for someone, Sherry possibly, to give us a breakdown on how these funds are allocated and why and the backup for it. So maybe we can get that for the next meeting, and in the meantime, we're not approving the warrant item. Have I got that straight, sir?
Well, I don't think it's from the accounting department, we need the, we need the, the county department just passes these through and reviews them according to budget, not to, to how they're being spent. So I'm asking that somebody comes in and says, hey, here is the criteria that all the hotels use for determining how they're going to spend the, the money they receive for promoting prospect heights, because I just think the last few applications I've read have been basically turning in receipts, and I think we're even paying finance charges on some late bills they have, which doesn't seem to make sense. So I want somebody to come in from that board to give us an explanation and to tell us how they can clean up these reports that come in and show us what they're spending their money on, or show us how whatever they're spending it on according to these payments benefits the city, because I don't see it.
And that was the intention of my motion at the last meeting, have somebody from the Tourism District in here.
Well, the reason I said accounting, because it's embedded through the accounting, they go through all those bills, they meet with the people that submitted the bills and so on and so forth. But right now, you want to hold the warrant payout, is that right?
But before we get to that, I want to be clear on why we're having this person come. It's not, it's not the turning in the bill and the receipt, the county department just verifies it's in budget, and each hotel is asking for their correct amount that's allocated based on the budget. We need to see, same way we'd ask the Natural Resource Commission to come in and tell us, if you're going to ask us for money for a summer intern, what is that person going to do, so that we know what we're getting? And they go through, they get the person, and then they come back and show us what they did with that. We're not seeing that with the Tourism Board. We need to see that this money is going to, like it originally did, for advertisement on 294, for doing certain things to try and bring people in. To me, it looks like we're repaying the hotels for expenses incurred for running their software system to make reservations. That wasn't the intent. So we have to have somebody come in and explain, maybe they don't have a process. Maybe they don't have a, a set of criteria that they use to.
Evaluate.
Evaluate these expenses. And we need to do that. It's, I get it, it was kind of new a few years ago, but, and it was properly done a few years ago, but now it seems to be getting less, looser as far as what qualifies for promoting prospect heights. So we need somebody to come in to assure us that that's what's going on.
All right, one more time, you're asking to strike the warrant.
I will begin 14, we're on 13. We're just trying to put this on the agenda, to see, whether it be Holly or whoever is the chairman, or the person of that.
Right, right. We got it. I know Joe wrote it down, I wrote it down, but we've got that portion of it. Anything else on that issue, please? If not, now we're going to talk about the warrants.
Okay, so my question is, are we removing the cost of the Tourism District warrant of $70,716.27?
I would like to see that removed until we have this presentation.
Was that a motion?
I saw move.
Second, please. We have a second from Alderman Williamson, and I presume we can take a, a roll call, please.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, so if you subtract the $70,000 from your bottom line, it should be with the correct number.
Correct, so.
But tonight.
So tonight, for the total warrants, minus the $70,716.27, the expenses total, not including the other wire payments, is $255,260.24 plus the 9/14/2018 payroll posting of The Office of Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $26,649.34. Police pension payments in the amount of $70,320.22 leaves us with total warrants in the amount of $497,635.90.
All right, thank you. I think you got it. Approval of warrants as presented, please. Motion?
Some move.
Second, please.
Second?
Just a clarification, did you, I thought I heard you say $470,000. I think you meant $470,000.
All right.
All right, so we got that clear. Any other comments? If not, take the roll call.
Alderman Masser.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Ludwicksen.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Non-agenda matters. Do we have anyone turning anything in?
No one turned anything in.
All right, we are not having an executive session. Action of the executive session doesn't pertain. We have a motion to adjourn, please.
Sir, before, before we adjourn, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I turned in my, my article for the newsletter, and it's my understanding that that newsletter, per your direction, is not going out until after November.
No, I just said earlier, we're going to try to get it out before the.
Try and get it out before what?
Well, be, you know, before the vote. The.
Doesn't it typically go out like now? Beginning of fall?
It's, it's, well, fall is a long term, but if it's ready, you can go out right now, sure. There's no time limit set either way. We're going to get it out.
Is something delaying it?
It's ready to print, but they're working on a flyer specifically for Home Rule and the meetings that are being held.
Is that flyer going out with the newsletter, or is that going out separate? Because last, last we talked about it, it was going out separate.
Separately, right. It's going out, like the trucking.
Right.
Two pager, same kind of thing. But in that, we will also advertise the meetings, so it has to go out before the sixth.
The, this independent piece has got to go out.
First, right, that's about.
What about the newsletter itself?
I don't know. Where do we stand with that, Peter?
Per your direction, I was told to do the, the notification first, but I can accept articles from everybody, which people have been, the elected officials have been turning in articles. Soon as I get all the articles from all the elected officials, we can get the newsletter out as well. I have not been pushing the newsletter because I assume the priority was the notification or the notice for the Home Rule, but I'll be more than happy to start pushing the newsletter as well to get that out before the election.
Should I answer your question, sir?
Not really, I mean, just cur, usually it goes out beginning of September, and I'm being told that it's not going out until November and.
All our newsletters have not gone out on the first of that season. None of our newsletters have gone out first this season. Takes a while to put stuff together.
Don't dispute that.
Take it either way, then.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Do we have that?
Some move.
Second.
Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.